Let me say to all of us, good evening for this day, March 27, 2023. Before we start tonight's meetings, we want to acknowledge that this is Take Down Tobacco Day in the City of Muskogee. I have a proclamation to recognize that event, after which I'm going to ask those organizers and volunteers that they will join us up front to take a photograph with myself and the members of the city council. Whereas nationwide, sixteen point five percent of all high school students use at least one tobacco product along with nearly four point five percent of middle school students, and whereas each day, more than eleven hundred kids under eighteen try their first cigarette, and close to one hundred kids become new regular smokers. Whereas smoking is the number one preventable cause of death in the United States, killing over four hundred eighty thousand people per year, along with secondhand smoke causing more than forty-one thousand deaths in the U.S. per year. Whereas the National Day of Action is an annual national initiative sponsored by the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids that makes elementary, middle, and high school student leaders in the movement to stand up and speak out against the tobacco industry. Whereas, the children of Muskogee no longer tolerate the tobacco industry targeting kids and vulnerable groups with tobacco products leading to addiction, disease, and death in our community. Whereas, the leaders and citizens of this city wish to stand up with the children of Muskogee in opposition to the sale, advertising, and marketing of tobacco products to children. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Marlon J. Coleman, Mayor of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, hereby declare April 1st, 2023 as Take Down Tobacco Day in the City of Muskogee. I'm going to ask that all of those supporters, organizers, and young people who are here who volunteer for this program, if you would join me at the front of the podium for a photo.
Okay, this is really cool.
27, 2023. We will have the invocation and flag salute. Let us stand at this time. Let us pray. Lord, as we come before you on today, Father, we pray that we are led and governed by the presence of your Holy Spirit, Father, that we will do what is best for the citizens of Muskogee in their entirety. Father, give us the clairvoyance, direction, and understanding we need that we may make wise decisions for these, your people. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Let us have the salute. Let us look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of February 27, 2023, or take other necessary action.
The minutes appear in our packets on tonight. Do we have any corrections or motion to proceed?
For approval?
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second on the minutes. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending February 28, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, you have the claims before you. We do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Miller as they're motion to approve the claims?
For approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, that item passes. That meeting is adjourned. We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority for March 27, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MRA Minutes Regular Session, February 27, 2023, and Special Call, March 13, 2023, or take other necessary action.
The said minutes appear in our packet on tonight. Are there any corrections to the minutes, or do we have a motion to accept?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MRA claims for February 18, 2023, through March 17, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Claims appear in item as presented in item number two. Do we have any corrections or discussion or motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the claims. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. That meeting is adjourned. We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for March 27, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Here.
Madam Clerk, are we all accounted for?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now consider the approval of the minutes for the special call, City Council, February 13, and City Council Regular Session, February 27. Those minutes are in our packets. Do we have any questions or concerns about the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. The consensus consists of items numbers one through four. Are there any items to move to the regular agenda, or do we have a motion to proceed?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Before we read item number five, I think Deputy Mayor Reed has requested of the council that we will hear on the public hearing.
Yes, we have, some of us have met with some of the, with the hotel owner, and we have received some new information that we think would be very helpful if all counselors got an opportunity to hear a presentation. Tonight would not allow him even justice with the five-minute marker to present those items. So I'm gonna plead with my counsel at this time if we could table this item until the next city council meeting and schedule some communication lunches to have us all an opportunity to receive the information that we were able to receive on this week. I think it would be eye-opening information and just to make sure that we are all on the same page when it comes to, you know, the process in which we are undertaking with this property on 32nd Street. So my motion would be that we table this item at this time.
Madam Clerk, what would that date be?
April the 24th.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Derek Reed to table this item to April 24th. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table item number five to April 24th. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. It will be taken up again on April 24th. Thank you. Item number six.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4191A, excuse me, an ordinance amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter 64, Muskogee Management Regulation, Article 3, Flood Damage Prevention, Section 64-68, Designation of Flood Plane Administrator, Section 64-69, Designation of Flood Plane Permit Committee, Duties and Responsibilities, or Take Other Necessary Action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, with some of the recent retirements that we've had, especially Mr. Garvins, he was our certified flood plane manager, and then myself and another member of Public Works was actually on the flood plane committee. With Mr. Garvin leaving, that left an opening for a flood plane, certified flood plane manager. And Ms. Wright, Abigail Wright, has passed the course. She took a week-long course to be a certified flood plane manager, but the duties of that have moved over into Public Works away from the planner. So this ordinance change is basically to reflect the current employees, and I'll let Mr. Rigney explain that change. But I want to add, I'm very proud of Ms. Wright for that. That is a very hard course to take and pass, and she did, and we're very proud of her.
Rigney?
Yes, we are very proud of Abby. The changes in this ordinance are just general housekeeping items to make sure that our ordinance matches our current practices, and the main portion that's changed is just some verbiage from the planner to a Public Works designee to be the certified flood plane manager, and then some changes in positions on the flood plane committee. Staff recommends approval.
Counsel, have you had diligence to read this? Are we ready to move, or was your pleasure?
Move for approval?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on the item. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number seven.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4192A, an ordinance amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Boards and Commissions, Division 15, Muskogee Wellness Coalition, Section 2-532, amending the language to reflect changes approved by the Muskogee Wellness Initiative Coalition Board, or take other necessary action.
Before you present, Mr. Anthes, I have a housekeeping question for Mr. Miller and for Ms. Bodenhammer. I'd like us to, in the future, make certain that these ordinance changes are committed before they come to council, so that they can have time to have their two readings.
So yes, Mr. Mayor, that's always the prerogative of the council, and so the discussion that we've had in the past, moving to the two meetings a month, has been to take the temperature of the council. So if you'd wish, we can, one way we can do that, in this case, we may be able to hear it now and then move it to the council as the first hearing, and then table it to the second meeting, if that's your preference.
I just want to be sure going forward. I think we're good for tonight. We've already approved number six. I'm ready to approve number seven. I just want more time than next time.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Anthes?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before you have the proposed change for the ordinance, and this has to do with our members in relation to the Muskogee Wellness Initiative, we have had trouble in the past of filling some of the seats, and specifically having a licensed physician on the board was something that we were able to do in the past and have had trouble over the last year of filling that seat there. So this change would allow us to kind of reduce the qualifications there just slightly to a medical professional, kind of more loose language, to hopefully fill that final seat there, and then also removes the language of the chairman of the Turning Point to be a person by position and to be a person of appointment as opposed to a person of position. And the city attorney's office has been very gracious in helping us come up with this language, and just hope to get your approval this evening to help us to fill those board seats. Happy to answer any questions, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Anthes. I just need clarity. What is a medical professional?
Sure, so that could, it's intentionally vague language in order to allow that seat to be filled by multiple people. I mean, the intent of the language is, you know, somebody like a nurse, doesn't have to be a physician, it could be somebody else that's in the medical field that has a background and history of health. So somebody in the health field would be a preferred person to fill this seat.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? What is the pleasure of this body?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Lynn Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number eight.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2932, authorizing certain modifications to the medical plan benefits under the City of Muskogee Employee Benefit Plan, providing and directing said modifications be incorporated into the plan documents, summary plan descriptions, and benefit summary sheets, as well as approval of Resolution Number 2932, approving and authorizing execution of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Benefit Program application and required addendums, BCS Stop Loss Coverage Policy, Prime Therapeutics Required Documents, and all other required documents, all to become effective on May 1, 2023, and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all necessary documents for renewal and implementation purposes, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Eaton?
Mayor, members of the council. The Employee Health Insurance Committee has met with Alliant Insurance Services to discuss plan renewals and alternatives to those plan renewals for 23, the 2023-24 plan year. And the insurance fund balance as of March 22 was negative 165,000, so no benefit increases are being recommended for the plan year 23-24 due to the performance of the plan. Some history, the plan years 2017 and 18, and 18 and 19, both the city and employees were able to experience a premium holiday and see medical premiums, medical premium contributions temporarily reduced by thirteen point nine seven percent. For plan year 19 and 20, due to the decrease in the fund balance, the approximate recommended levels by our previous broker, the premium holiday ceased and all rates returned to the rate, rates in effect on April 30, 2017. In approximately April of 2020, the city provided a one-time fund balance increase of $1 million to ensure fund stabilization, and rates were also increased by nine percent due to plan performance. For plan year 22-23, the city implemented a 10% increase to funding on the medical plan for the city on the employee-only level, and a 10% increase on the medical plan for the employees who have dependent coverage, as well as implementation of a dual option for dependents. And unfortunately, as we have seen last year, we are continuing to see the fund balance decrease. As compared to the previous years, we have seen a relatively flat fund balance, and as a result, the city is recommending an increase to the funding of $92.73 per employee per month on the medical plan for the city on all tiers, and an increase ranging from approximately $13.95 to $24, or $25.04 per pay period for dependent coverage on medical, depending on what the employee elects. Based on the recommended increases, the highest tier will see a net impact per paycheck of approximately $18. These increases total approximately $569,000, and this increase was discussed with the insurance committee and was passed unanimously. The fully insured dental plan rates will increase 2.6% for the employees, or for the city's contribution, and employees will hold dependent coverage, who hold dependent coverage will see between 93 cent decrease and a $1.03 increase in premiums per pay period, depending on the tier. The fully insured vision plan rates will see an overall decrease of 4.4% for the city's contribution, and the employees will hold dependent coverage. We'll see between a 27 cent reduction to a 31 cent increase in premiums per pay period, depending on the vision tier elected. Over the years, our broker has recommended we bring the insurance fund balance to approximately three months of claims, or approximately $1.2 million. The proposed increase will help with funding, but does not necessarily maximize the plan utilization at this time. The only changes to the BCBS plan document will be language, basic, or, sorry, basic language and legal language to be compliant with applicable laws and regulations. No plan changes or modifications are recommended at this time for the medical plan. No benefits, changes are being recommended or made to the dental or vision insurance plans, other than switching providers from MetLife to Delta Dental for dental and VSP for vision. Mutual of Omaha, Colonial Life, and Task will all remain, and Task will remain as our Section 125 administrator. Tentatively, open enrollment meetings and education meetings for employees have been scheduled for April 3 through the 6, and we will be holding in-person meetings to give employees opportunity to learn the best ways to use their insurance and help the plan. Staff and the insurance committee recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. I certainly appreciate the work of the committee. I'm not ready to move forward on this item. I think we need to have several communication lunches so that we could get more details about the plan, and then evaluate whether or not it's time for us to put the broker up for bid. That's my concern.
Yes. One second.
Do I need a motion?
So Maggie, can you help us understand where we are in Mr. Cummings as well in our timing for our insurance year, and making sure that we understand the council's direction, where we are for this year, and what that looks like moving forward?
Okay, so we are, again, right at the end. The plan starts over May 1st, so.
Chris is the chair of the insurance committee. I just want to make sure you all know that.
Thank you.
So in order to get everything situated in open enrollment to allow our employees to make any changes that they need to, then I feel we need to go ahead and move ahead with this. I do understand the council's concern in looking at other brokers. We've been with this broker for about two years, so we were looking at going out for bid next year and, you know, basically testing the waters, making sure that we are offering the best for our employees. So that is in the works for next plan year, is to look at other brokers and see if anybody can help us, or if we are still with the best broker.
So our deadline is May 1st?
May 1st is when the new plan goes into effect, but we have to have time to get the employees a chance to sign up and either keep what they've got or make changes to their plan, to their insurance. So we have to have time for them to do that, and we have to get the information into the insurance company so that they can get it into their system, so that we're ready to go on May 1st.
Thank you for your presentation. Ms. Bodenhammer, when is the next available Public Works and Committee meeting? For Ms. Tracy, sitting right next to me.
It would be April the 10th.
I'm gonna move we table to that day and then schedule a special call if we need to, to get caught up on our dates.
Mr. Mayor, may we recognize?
Yes, ma'am.
What is that time window for open enrollment? What's the gap?
It's a week, basically.
Yeah, April 3rd through the 6th is what it's currently scheduled at.
So with the date that the mayor has proposed, are we gonna be in trouble, or are we gonna be, how do that, are we gonna be running up on the, running too close?
It puts it very close, yes. It creates quite a bit of, quite a bit of a headache.
Can we move the date, Mr. Mayor?
What date do you all recommend?
I mean, that's quickly, that's just two weeks. That gives us a week to look at the stuff and then turn around and have a meeting. I would have liked to have had this done a month ago, so we had had time to review it.
Can we do a really quick council luncheon sometime this week?
I mean, or next week.
Next week.
Or this week.
We don't have time to look at, it's gonna be tough.
May I be recognized?
You may.
I don't think that we're giving the employee time enough to make the decision if we take a look at this through a community, or through a council or luncheon.
No.
I think we just need to go ahead and move forward, and then next year, give us plenty of time to take a look at the situation, because having dealt with this myself, open enrollment for employees, that's not enough time, and we're on a short window.
I will probably not withdraw my motion, only because it's not the council's fault that we just got this. And I'm so sorry that we did, but we owe it to our employees to be certain that all of the due diligence is done, that we need to do. We're talking about rate increases, and I don't remember from the minutes from the last time, but I thought we said we were gonna look at brokers. So I won't withdraw my motion, but if it dies for lack of a second, so be it.
I don't second it.
Do we have a second?
I said I'd second it before we started discussion.
You can withdraw it if you want. I gave you that opportunity.
No. I'm with you on that. I think we should, I was under the same impression that we were putting this up for bid, and it would have been nice to have more.
If I may make a statement?
Yes.
Okay, so we also, we try to get things done a lot sooner than this, but what we
Okay, so we also, we try to get things done a lot sooner than this, but what we do as a committee is we take a look at, number one, what's it going to affect the plan? How is it going to affect the employee? If, you know, we look at, healthcare costs are going through the roof, as we all know, and I did some research today, and our plan is very, very low contribution for the employee, and pretty low contribution for the city, for the employee. So our plan is good for the employee, but what we do is we look at, okay, what are the options we're going with? Okay, if we go with this option, will it hurt the plan? Will it hurt the employee? So we have had several meetings over the past few months, looking at this, going, okay, we've got questions about this. So we question it, and we pretty much question it to death, so that we understand what we're recommending, and we understand that this is what we think is the best for the city, the plan, and the employee. So that is why, a lot of times, it pushes right up to the limit. We try not to, but as we go through this and try to, you know, settle on something, sometimes the numbers aren't out in, until, that we can decide on, until this late in the game, because they're looking back at the plan year, they're looking back on how the claims affected last plan year, which we had, we had some major claims the last few years to our plan. So, and that's not, you know, anybody's fault, it just sometimes happens. Next year could be a good plan year, we don't have that many plans, that many claims, but we have to, we have to look at all the numbers, we have to sometimes wait for those numbers to come in. So while we do try to get it to council sooner than this, sometimes it is not possible.
Thank you. Counselor Stout, I will amend my motion to include the fact that if we need to call a special call next week, in advance of the 10th, once we have the information that we need, if it sustains much longer.
That's fine.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I just know from dealing with insurance, through my employer, insurance cost is, I mean, it's skyrocketing. I don't think we have time to do this. I think if we're gonna do this, I agree with Pearlene, we should wait till next year, because I think what you're gonna discover, those insurance companies you're gonna go out to bid with, they're not gonna be fast, at all. And we, meanwhile, we could hurt our employees by not going ahead and proceeding. Those increases, and they may sound high, they're not any higher than what my increases just happened at the bank. I mean, insurance is going, it's, you can ask Tracy, it's gone up. And so I think, I don't feel good about tabling it.
Motion in the second to table, with the opportunity to do a special call if necessary. Further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, just kinda echo what Ms. Shirley's saying, is that if you send it out to forbid, it may take a longer time to get the numbers back, and we're already crunching for time. I've just asked you guys, next time, to really be more diligent to try to get it to us early. But I did have, what is our loss? Is our claims high, again, this year where we're?
The claims, last year, we experienced the high claims year last year, and it's cyclical. But since 2020, we've kinda had some high claims each year since. But, you know, so when, as we look forward, we don't know what kind, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, we can't see into the future. So what we have to do is we can say, okay, this is how much is max, and then this is how much we're funding, so we try to come somewhere in the middle, you know, because, you know, we could fund to the max, but that would really break the bank. But if we don't fund enough, then we're back in the same boat. So what we try to do is we try to work with the providers and say, okay, where's a good middle place to be, and that's what we shoot for. So that's what we recommend to the committee, is if we go with this type of contribution, then we should hit this contribution level, and, you know, we could have a better claims year this year, we could still have a bad claims year. And that's what, part of the change is, we're changing the reinsurance provider to get a better rate on our, insurance on our insurance, basically. So when, if it gets to a certain point, then that will kick in, that will start actually paying the claims.
Okay. Because I think a couple of years back, we lost a million bucks, and now we look like we're coming back around to the same, being underfunded. And, I'm just saying this.
And it is because, because that's what, again, you know, going back each year, what we try to do is we try to find the number. Well, unfortunately, the number that we looked at last year, we're thinking, okay, we had a bad year last year, hopefully we won't have a catastrophic year this year, and unfortunately, last year, we did have a pretty catastrophic year. So, you know, like I said, it is cyclical, but sometimes it goes a couple of years, then we have a couple of good years, and then another couple of bad years, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Can I ask a question? So Maggie, I guess the biggest thing is open enrollment and that process. So would, say for instance, we went with Mayor Coleman's recommendation, and we had to move that open enrollment through to the third week in April, would still put us in position to meet the May 1st deadline? Am I correct that it can be done?
It can be done, but I will say that some of the quotes that we've been given are on a kind of a timeline basis. If new claims come in that are potentially catastrophic claims, that could cause them to renegotiate the rights that they've given us. So the sooner that the contracts are signed, the better.
May I be recognized?
Yes, Dr. Whoos.
I feel like, kinda, we're kinda painted to a corner here, because I agree that, you know, insurance companies, they don't mess around, you know, I mean, they're not gonna mess around with what we do, and we could really hurt our employees if we decide to table this, and all of a sudden, things don't get done like they should, and then someone needs their medicine, and then now they can't, because we have a lapse in coverage. The other thing is, though, is that in August, after we kinda did everything, we, someone came up here, it seems out there now, you know, asked us to take into consideration to bid this out, to even speak to local vendors, and none of us up here, we just didn't do that.
We didn't do it.
I feel like that, you know, that some of that, you know, we should have, as a council, followed through with that, too, so I'm not real sure if tabling this is the best idea, just because I deal with insurance companies every day, and I just, I know how they move. I don't know what information we could get in even 30 days versus, versus 10 business days.
True.
But as a council, we do need to follow through with whenever we say that we want, you know, this done and this done, that, that, we make sure it happens.
Thank you, Dr. Whoos. Further discussion? We have a motion in the second. If the item doesn't pass, we'll entertain a substitute motion. Roll call.
Pearlene Boyati-Craig.
Clarification.
Yes.
On what the vote is.
This is a motion to table. I believe.
Yes, vote is to table.
Yes, it's to table. Okay.
Yes, to table.
Okay, no.
No to not.
No to not table, no.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
No.
Tracy Whoos.
No.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Stephanie Jones.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
No.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item fails, do we have a substitute motion to be offered by the council?
We move, I move that we go with the standard motion that Ms., I'm sorry.
Eaton.
Eaton.
Eaton had suggested that we take the quote, the bid to move forward.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Do we have any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearlene Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
No. The item passes. Thank you. Item number nine.
Receive quarterly report from the Muskogee Tourism Authority to discuss their projects, goals, and activities, as well as receive an update on the NCJAA basketball tournament, or take other necessary action.
Madam Stout, is it my understanding that you wish to table this item to a later date?
Yes, it should be, it should have been on the April 10th agenda, so we'll table it to April 10th.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll second. Roll call.
Pearlene Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 10.
Receive report from the Muskogee City-County Port Authority regarding their industrial development and workforce development for 2022, 2023, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, the members of Port Muskogee have asked that we move this to the April 24th City Council meeting. We can do that through official tabling, or we can, staff can just move it as an agenda item, your preference.
What's the will of the staff on that?
Just move it.
Take no action?
Yeah.
Take no action. Thank you. Item number 11.
Consider the approval of the use of $480,000 of the City of Muskogee matching grant funds for the Grandview Park redevelopment project, to match the Oklahoma Recreation Trail Fund and Land and Water Conservation Fund grants previously received by the city for this project, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Mayor and council members, I was here last month, and gave you an update about the Grandview project, and at that time, discussed the budget, and that, you know, this has been going on for some time, and so we, our budget was proposed way back, pre-COVID construction increases. So once we got into our design and work, we learned that our budget wasn't going nearly as far as enough, so we, we started with a $780,000 budget. What we did not include was a city match towards the federal funds that we're receiving, so what we're asking is for, to utilize the city match grant, grant match program, to match the federal funds of $480,000, to give us a new, a new budget of 1.2, $1,260,000. So we're asking, making that recommendation for your approval at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. What's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in the second on item number 11. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearlene Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 12.
Consider approval of Amendment Number Two for additional design services with Planning Design Group for the Grandview Park Improvements Project, as recommended by staff, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Mayor, this is associated agenda item to that increase. The, the design services are a percentage of the total project, so when we increase the construction cost to this 1.260,000, million, $1,260,000 budget, that we need to increase the design consultants as well, so this amendment is to do that.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion in the second on item number 12. Roll call.
Pearlene Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 13.
Consider approval of Change Order Number Two to the City Demolition Contract for Five-Star Demolition, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. This is an item from the Planning Department. Ms. Suesi is out of town representing the city at a national conference. This is just a change order reflective of the, of the price for demolition. It is for the rest of the contract year, which is just a few months, and we do anticipate bidding this project out again, but this is reflective of actual costs to our vendor. Ms. Suesi and Ms. Bowdenhammer have worked on this as well, so we do recommend approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. What's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Further discussion?
I just had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
So is this increase, for what purposes? Mike, Mr. Miller? That they're increasing, I see it said landfill increase, have they increased there?
So yes, the landfill rates have gone up. This is a contract that was bid approximately two years ago, and we, the council did vote to extend it last year, so this price has been, is basically a two-year-old price, and a lot of things have changed price-wise since that time, so this is basically an increase that's reflective of that. It still puts it far under the second highest bid that we received two years ago, even with this price increase, so we feel it's reasonable.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearlene Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 14.
Receive a report on stormwater projects that have been completed, planned, or in progress, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, Mayor. One of the things that has always caused me problems is being Public Works Director's rainwater. And for the years that I've served as Public Works Director, we spent so many of those years without any money, or any ability to fix some of the problems that we have, and I'm very pleased that we were able to build two major detention basins, and many miles of pipe, in my time here, and my job as Public Works Director doesn't tighten my stomach so tightly as it used to, when we get these many, many-day rain events. Unfortunately, here lately, we have experienced some huge increases in the rainfall intensity. We have now got a stormwater fund that we have resource, we have money to work with. We have been able to hire Fries and Nichols, an engineering company, to assist us with a 2D water model, which I have a copy of, if anybody wants to look at it. And out of that 2D model, we were able to develop at least 30 or 40 different projects that we're looking at going forward into next year. Several of those, Mr. Miller's gonna hear about tomorrow when we do our budgeting, and we do take in a million and a half a year approximately in our stormwater fund, and we have a debt service that we used, we borrowed three and a half million dollars to build those detention basins, so a lot of that money has to go to that debt service, but we do have a working fund now, and I'm very pleased of the progress that we've made in stormwater, and I see it every day. Unfortunately, we still have a lot of problems, but we do have some resource. Mr. Rigney has put together a presentation for you, that will show you what we have done in the past, what we're working on, and then him and I will answer any of your questions at the end of it, or you're welcome to interrupt him as we go through it, so.
Right, thank you. So let's get started by talking about who actually does the stormwater work across the City of Muskogee. The City of Muskogee has three divisions that handle stormwater issues. First, we have the Stormwater Division headed up by Abby, and that is more of the quality side of stormwater, so making sure it's not polluted when it enters the system. Our Street Department does the repair, maintenance, and installation of the stormwater system, and our Projects Division does the large-scale projects where they coordinate with contractors to get projects done across the city. So let's talk about the stormwater system that we do have. The City of Muskogee has a network of borrow ditches varying in depth, and underground pipes ranging from 12 inches in diameter to 72 inches in diameter, that take water from the ground surface to several creeks around the city. Those creeks are Sam Creek and Cootie Creek amongst others, and those all feed into the Arkansas River. These pipes are fed through inlets and catch basins all over town, and the stormwater system is engineered to provide relief for a 100-year flood event. Here is a picture of the eight drainage basins across the city, and let's talk about a 100-year flood, since that's what we're designed around. The term 100-year flood is used to describe the recurrence interval of floods. The 100-year recurrence interval means that a flood of this magnitude has a 1% chance of occurring any given year. In other words, the chances that the river will flow as high as the 100-year flood this year are 1 in 100. A 200-year event is the same principle, but with 200 plugged in, and some very unlucky and improbable statistics are, we had two 200-year flood events since 2019. One of those was in 2019, and the other was in May of 2022. So we'll talk about some of the aspects of stormwater with some definitions and pictures. These are catch basins and inlets. This is where the water enters the system. These are borrow ditches that are along the roadside all over town. Detention ponds. Detention ponds are an earthen structure with an outfall at the lowest point. The goal is to detain water or slow the flow of water entering the system by allowing it to pool up and release slowly. These ponds are usually dry, and a parking lot detention is the same principle as a pond, but done in an urban area. A good example of that is the VA Parking Lot on Old Moggi. A retention pond is designed to store water and release it slowly through an outfall at the top. It's the same principle as a detention pond, but the outfall's at the top, so it remains full of water. A trickle channel is a concrete-lined drainage ditch to help increase the velocity and hold the flow line. And riprap is large rocks used to secure banks and keep erosion from taking dirt away from the creek bank. So Mr. Stewart talked about our stormwater fund, and it is funded through stormwater fees. Stormwater rate for residential, commercial, you'll see on the page, and the commercial is done for, it's done by ESU, which is an equivalent surface unit, and one ESU is equivalent to 200, or 2,650 square feet. So this is any surface that rainwater can't penetrate. So for commercial buildings, it would be their buildings and their parking lots, and any other hard surface that doesn't allow rainwater through it. These rates double for properties outside of the county, and these fees are used to pay for stormwater equipment, stormwater improvements, amongst other things, in the stormwater division. So citizens do share some responsibility with the city, and one of those is to not litter and keep Muskogee beautiful. The other is to keep culverts and tin horns underneath their driveways clean and unclogged, which we do assist with. They also can purchase new tin horns when theirs are defective, and the city partners with the citizens to, when they buy a new tin horn, we will come in and put it into grade for them, free of charge. Assist in keeping curb lines clean, grass and leaves out of the street. We do have our street sweeper program that does this, but it is always great to have additional assistance in keeping properties clean. One piece of equipment that's very specialized, that our Street Department uses to cut these drainage ditches out, is a Greatall telescopic boom excavator. You've probably seen it running up and down the streets. And now let's move on to some projects, and some areas that we've noted that could use improvement. So these are previously noted issues on the comprehensive plans that have been done So these are previously noted issues on the comprehensive plans that have been done by the city in the past. You can read the list there, and the parts that are in the red text are kind of some updates or where we stand on the issues at hand. So the SFHS stands for St. Francis Healthcare Systems, and we're working on an EDA grant to put in a detention basin there, which we have talked about. Queens and Peak has recently had a project completed that we'll talk about here shortly. 502 Crabtree, David Lane, and 302 Anthony, Haskell and Chestnut are all ones you'll see later on in the presentation. Here are just some more issues that have been noted in the comprehensive plan. And here are some that have been noted in other studies. And that last slide, here's a map of some of those areas. I'll make sure that this PowerPoint's available to you, so you can look at this more closely. The city has also put permanent high-water signs in several areas located around town. And here are some pictures of what those look like. We have some at Country Club and Chandler, some down in the Meadows, some on Cherokee by the underpass, and some on York and Peak, as well as others that are not pictured. Some other historical problem areas that we didn't mention on the previous lists are the downtown area around the Roxy, Main Street near Shawnee, Gulick and Burbank, and the Meadows. So we have several types of stormwater issues that might need improvement. Sinkholes, those are due to failed pipes, clogged or damaged tinhorns under private driveways, clogged or damaged tinhorns under roadways, inadequate drainage due to poor design, which a lot of these are not designed by the city, but we take them over whether they're annexed in or brought into the city other ways, and we maintain the original design as we work to find permanent improvements to the design. And we also have erosion, washout, and undermine. These are caused by turbulence at an outfall or water standing on the roadside. So here's a map that shows all the projects kind of by zone, and you have a legend over there on the side that shows you what each of them are. But we have a, we're very well dispersed across the city in where we're doing these projects. One thing to note, though, is all of the water typically drains to the east, which that's where the river is, so there might be a little bit more over on the east side. As far as prioritization of projects go, we take into a lot of, a lot of things into account when we plan these, and the first is severity. So we want to prioritize the ones that are dangerous to life and health. That's typically areas where we may see water rescues. Next, we look at flooding in homes or structure damage. Then after that, we look at flooding in garages and driveways, and then we make sure we also look at streets being flooded from curb to curb, but not necessarily to the point of a water rescue. We've done this with the assistance of Freeze &amp; Nichols Engineering. The city has used a 2D water model to locate these problem areas, identify what projects are low-hanging fruit, meaning relatively simple fixes and cost-effective, as well as utilizing their assistance in a long-term program. So we'll get into some projects that we have recently completed. So first, we have Civitan Park. There's a drainage channel that runs along the back of Civitan Park where water was getting in some homes, and that area is indicated by the blue line on the string, on the screen. And this is a picture of the trickle channel we put in there. We moved it away from the houses and concreted it in to increase the velocity. And we did add a berm to decrease the water, slow the water getting into that trickle channel. We also did a erosion control project on the corner of Seventeenth and Eighteenth that could have, if left untreated, could have caused potential issues for that home. Off of Twenty-Sixth Street, there was some severe washout in the residence backyard, so we riprap that creek in. On Quail Run in the Meadows, there was some water getting into homes, and there was water pooling up on this low curve down there on Quail Run. So the street crew dug that up and took a look to investigate, and what we had discovered is a fiber company had bored into our water line. So what we did was we coordinated with the fiber company, moved their line, put a new line in, and did some earthwork on top to make sure this area drained more adequately, and we have had success with that. We did that last year and haven't had any further incidents. This is the Fredonia Creek Bank, which we put riprap in to secure that bank. Twenty-Fourth Street, we did do underground stormwater piping all up and down North Twenty-Fourth Street, which was a great improvement. At Eagle Crest, we took the existing channel, which you can see in this picture, and deepened it. There was a lack of fall in the trickle channel, which kind of caused it to hold some water. We're getting complaints about smell and insects out there, so we were able to work with the gas company, and they were very helpful, because they do have a high-pressure line that is back there. At the Elliott Street Detention Basin, we had a house that was getting some floodwater into it from water sheeting off of a field. And so what we did was we took a extra catch basin and put it in and plumbed it out into our already concreted channel right there, and you'll see that that house on the corner was the one experiencing some flooding. During the May fifth flood in 2022, we had quite a few issues come to the surface, which happens when you have a severe rain event like that. It'll expose some underlying issues. This was the sinkhole on Monta. Cook Construction repaired that. This is on Foltz and Turner in Phoenix Village. This was a full system replacement of several hundred feet of underground storm sewer pipe. This was a big project. At Thirty-Nine Fifteen Sheffield, there was a sinkhole very near the foundation of a house. This line had been causing issues for several years, and we had been fixing it, but it needed a full replacement at this point, so we did several hundred feet of replacement there. It was a very big job and much-needed. 501 Valhalla, there's a catch basin that takes all the water off of Hilldale Football Field. We had a contractor come in and redo that to stop any sinkholes from coming there. Same thing on Elgin and Junction, we had a sinkhole that was fixed. Sinkhole on Sixteenth Street. Sinkhole on Twenty-Fourth, on South Twenty-Fourth Street, from a, from a hole in the top of a pipe, our street crews repaired this. Park Place had sinkholes after the May fifth flood that we worked with a contractor to repair. A property on Hyde Park was experiencing some flooding due to water running down a dead-end street, so what we did was put in a speed hump as a deterrent and plumbed that water over to a catch basin and out onto a street that could more adequately handle the flow. Peak Boulevard in Queens, this was a two-part issue. Both were caused by stormwater. The bank was being eroded by turbulence from three outfalls, and then this left our sanitary sewer pipe uncovered and exposed. So what we did was we contracted this out with our sanitary sewer contractor, and they did a very good job. So here is the washout and the undermining and the before pictures, and then a nice, really good view of what that trickle cha, or what that drainage channel looks like now. 502 Crabtree, this used to be just a dirt channel that would experience flooding, and it would get into the sanitary sewer manhole and cause some potential INI issues. So what we did is stormwater worked with the Pollution Control Division to raise that manhole and get that trickle channel concreted in to increase the flow. Third and Joplin was a custom-made reducer pipe that was repaired after the May fifth flood. Ninety-foot section of thirty-inch storm sewer pipe failed under Dr. Parker and Dr. Smythe's eye doctor's office on York, and the city's street department replaced that pipe and repaired the concrete that was altered. And there's a picture of that segment. So let's move to some recently complete, oh, this was the last recently completed one. Rolling Hills was experiencing nuisance flooding at the bottom of their driveways. So what the city did was we got a study to put this back to how it was originally designed, which is adequate drainage, and we took our forces and cut those ditches back out. We worked with homeowners and property owners in the area to get this draining as best as we possibly can. And we still do have some work to do there, but that will come up in the planning phase. So in the planning phase, first we'll talk about the Meadows. There were sixteen houses bought out after the one-hundred-year flood event. This happened several years ago. Over twenty-five houses were flooded in the two-hundred-year flood event, and the city is working on the buyout program for this, but that is FEMA-dependent. And there are also projects in planning to correct the bridges to be passable in a severe rain event. Rolling Hills, we still do have some concrete channels that we need to put in out there. We're working on that with some easements. The Hospital Detention Basin is that EDA grant we've talked about, and this will improve the water off of Denver Street, Thirty-Sixth Street, Thirty-Eighth Street, and by adding that detention basin, it will improve the water on Old Moggi. And here's a overview of that project. Clubview Drive is a property that has a trickle channel on it that is being undermined and needs some maintenance. Park Place Creek has some erosion that we will get in and repair. Haskell Boulevard in Utah. So this is part of the street capital improvement project that is going to be a concrete street, but before we put that concrete street in there, we need to do some underground storm sewer to make sure that street stays in good shape. So that project is in the works right now, and there will be a combination of underground storm sewer piping and over-the-ground storm sewer drainage. And here's some pictures of that. This is from the rain that we had last week, so you can see that there's really some water going there. And then this is Haskell and Chestnut, which is right in the same area. The Health Department on Thirty-Fourth Street has an open borrow ditch that we intend to pipe underground. This is going to be great for the aesthetics of the area, as well as the drainage, and this removes that from our contract mowing list. And here's a diagram of that. Twelfth and Martin Luther King Boulevard, we have drains in there, and those drains are consistently getting clogged up due to not being large enough to flow to, yes, self-clean, thank you. So those drains need some rehab, and we're going to put together a project to get those to more adequately self-clean and drain. Gulick and Peak, there is a high-pressure gas line and a water line that run through a creek, and the sides are eroding, and we need to do some erosion control and tree removal to make sure we protect those lines. And we do have some projects in progress right now. Smith Ferry Road, which we talked about about a month ago, where we're going to do a detention basin and underground storm sewer. We have Canterbury Storm Sewer, which is going on right now, which is several, several hundred feet of underground storm sewer that has failed and caused multiple sinkholes. And it's four hundred feet down Golf Lane and seven hundred feet down Canterbury. We also have got Orchard Parkway, this is out to bid and waiting to get, or this has been bid and is about to get started. This is part of the Smith Ferry Road project that was pulled out due to time sensitivity, and this is a replacement of a large culvert pipe that has failed and caused some sinkholes. And then we have Country Club. So Country Club South, which is in front of Creek Elementary, is going to get curb and gutter with underground storm sewer piping and also widened. And Country Club North, which is down towards those storage buildings in that, in that valley right there. The project is to widen the road in order to increase the size of the culvert. This is a continuation of the project on the Civitan Drainage Basin, and this project takes place in the floodplain, which will require a floodplain permit. And this area is important. Water rescues frequently happen in this area when severe rains take place, so it is very pressing for us to get this repaired. And in the Country Club and Shawnee intersection, this project would include drainage improvements from approximately one thousand feet north of the intersection down to the south side of the intersection. And we also have the Roxy and Downtown improvements between Elgin and Broadway and Second and Third Street. This would alleviate some of that flooding that the Roxy has experienced due to the wake on the road. The area has been plagued by high water, and the storm sewer pipes underneath it are just not the correct size, so we would, we're looking into several different solutions. The city is working with engineers with several good ideas to decide which one is the best after they're fully evaluated. And just some problems that are facing our system are aging pipes. A lot of these pipes were put in at this, all at the same time, so they're failing all at the same time. Rain events seem to be increasing in frequency and severity. Our street department is the ones who do the work, so, on the storm sewer system. So a fully dedicated staff just for stormwater could potentially speed some of these up. Homeowners have tinhorns that have failed, and they don't replace them. Homeowners allow litter, yard debris to get into their drains, frequently clogging. That lead to frequent clogging. And the city did not design or install several problem areas they were annexed in. It's our duty to continue to maintain them as designed while we work to redesign and reinstall a better system, but it is an expensive process, so we have to prioritize responsibly. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, and so will Mr. Stewart.
How prepared are we for this weekend's rain?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
How prepared are we for this weekend's rains?
We're as prepared as we can be. When we see rain in the forecast, forecast, we allocate crews to clean out storm drains and catch basins in order to adequately receive that rain.
My concern is that, for example, with the Roxy, they've had an inordinate expense on drying out their building, and then it's going to rain again Thursday or Friday, and I have the same concerns with St. Francis and other areas, that they've gutted parts of their building because it flooded, and if it's going to do it again, what can we do to be certain that it's not as bad?
So one of the things that we did do, Mayor, this week, as a matter of fact, I think today, we had some rain socks, and I don't know the appropriate name for them.
Pig sock.
Pig sock. So we bought a bunch of pig socks, which are basically long sandbags. So we're going to take those down to the businesses along Old Moggi Street and Third Street that are experiencing that, so they'll have something to place out in front of them until we can get this relieved. And then on the St. Francis issue, Mayor, that was a construction issue. Our storm sewers were running adequately out there. The emergency manager, Tyler Evans, myself, Avery, Melvin Parker, we all went straight to the hospital, and we knew that was going on to make sure that there wasn't something failing in our system, and our system was working, and it was not at capacity. And what they had discovered is that some of the catch basins they had built inside the hospital grounds had actually stopped up with some of the sod that they had just put down. So I didn't see where the city had involvement in that, but we do respond if there's something like that. We go out immediately and try to assist. We also, just to be safe, Avery got our contractor, who has a camera system big enough to go through all those pipes, started this week piping or cambering all its system, so we'll have that where we can view it to make sure there's nothing inside the storm sewer itself that was causing blockage or any of the problems, and make sure that all the pipes that come into that sixty-inch main are open and flowing like they should and haven't collapsed. So we're doing our due diligence. We're trying to make sure that that doesn't happen again. We're working with the contractors. As a matter of fact, Monday morning, we went out there and met with St. Francis's staff and the contractors, and then we walked the grounds to make sure that everybody was aware of what happened, how it happened, and what they did to alleviate it. Then the contractor did dig a diversion ditch, and part of the problem is they're switching from an old storm sewer system over into new piping, and they've got caught in a big rain while they're trying to switch these things over. So it was unfortunate, but I think, I think everybody that worked on it has a good understanding of how to keep it from happening again. Doesn't mean it won't. You know, it's kind of like this Meadows issue that we had. We had the sixteen houses bought out there for the hundred-year event, which is what we design our storm sewer around and what most municipalities do design those around. And the event that we got out of the Meadows that caused this last flooding for those extra twenty-five houses was a two-hundred-year event. We weren't expecting that, so now we're looking to try and move forward and plan around that two-hundred-year event, which will mean more house buyouts, which means more stormwater money is going to be needed, because at the last, the last time we bought them, it was seventy-five percent FEMA money, twenty-five percent city. So we'll have to come up with a match as we move forward. So I tell you, you don't understand just how greatly appreciated that stormwater fund is to public works. That's one of the best things that ever happened, because now we're building some money to work with. And another thing that you've done that me and Avery appreciate tremendously is raising the manager's approval level to fifty thousand dollars, because a lot of those projects that you just saw, Avery showed you, are in that twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar range. And we have to put a bid packet together and go out to bid, and it raises the cost of it. We have, sometimes we have to get an engineered set of plans when we can go out and just get three contractors on site, explain what the problem is, and get those bids right there. And Doctor Who's the one that you're interested in over on Park Boulevard. That's one of those now we can, we can do under that, that new limit level. Another thing that Avery mentioned that I want to go over again is we did annex in a lot of areas that the pipes weren't put in properly. So they didn't grade the ditch so that it had the right elevation, so that each pipe was lower. So we'll go out there, and one pipe will be high, one pipe will be low, one pipe will be high, and the only way you can correct that is to take the pipes out and regrade. And some of those areas, the pipes have been in for fifty, sixty, seventy years, and when you take them out, they fail, and it's the homeowner's responsibility to pay for it. So we try to adjust to grade to the existing levels that we can, but we face all kinds of problems. And, and again, I am so proud of the fact that we have some funding and mechanisms that are in place now to help us work on these things, and I hope you see that we are trying to fix some of these problems. And saying that, I'll turn it over back to you, Mayor.
Did we have a timeframe for Shawnee and Country Club?
So right now, with the construction that's going on, on the bridge going toward Fort Gibson, we don't want to interrupt any of that side traffic. So part of that project is roadwork and part of it is signalization. We're moving forward with the signalization portion. Matter of fact, you'll probably, probably see that on your next agenda. So we're moving forward with that, and we will, we have a problem out there today at Country Club in Shawnee where there is a cavity that came just, just today. So we're going to have to make some temporary repairs, but the full road portion in the storm sewer that Avery was talking about is probably a little ways away, working with ODOT not to congest that any more than it already is. I hope that answered your question, Mayor.
Further questions from this body?
I had a question. How do we manage the drainage systems? You know, we had the rain, and it didn't take no time for us to flood. Are we cleaning the drains on a regular basis? Are we just doing them? How can we better do that?
So in my budget that Mr. Miller's going to see, we're going to be asking for some money to look to a contractor to actually help us clean some of these drains. I was up in Tulsa the other day watching, and they have a contractor that actually goes out and assists their city crews by cleaning the manhole itself, you know, taking the grate off and cleaning down in the system, and then running a flusher through the, the lines. So we're looking to next year's budget to try to improve some of that stuff, and that's why Avery pointed out that we need more dedicated sources on it. So after a rain event and during a rain event, the street department can't patch the potholes, they can't work on the streets, so the focus shifts to storm drains. And each crew is given an area in there to go out and clean the drain off, and their instructions is to clean inside that drain if need be. And Avery just And Avery, this, this week, has bought a bunch of post-hole diggers and more equipment that they can use to clean that stuff out. So we're looking forward.
Also, with the alleys and the trees limbs that fall that, that, that blocks the flow of the water that's trying to get through Cooter Creek, Cooter Creek is stopped up. I mean, you know, so it's gonna keep doing the same thing if we don't get out and clean some of those ditches, you know, the ditches are bad, you know, what do we do, what are we doing there?
So if you'll go back to Avery's PowerPoint, he showed you a picture of a telescopic boom excavator that we call a grate-oil. That grate-oil goes every single day when it's not broken down, and it's not broken down very often. It just happens to be right now, it's got a, a, a switch out. But that machine goes every day with a couple of dump trucks, and that's all it does is clean storm drain ditches. And that's every day, almost every day of the year.
Do we need more than one? Do we need more than one?
So those pieces of machinery are about, that one was $350,000. As we're moving forward, I think what we need more is that storm drain cleaning equipment, that one grate-oil can keep us going. If we need more, we've got a track hoe, we've got mini excavators, we've got backhoes, we've got other stuff that we can put on it.
But if we had the perfect budget situation, another one would...
I would say you need 10 of them, Mayor. If you had the perfect budget. So I'm never gonna tell you we don't need more equipment. That's not what I'm trying to say. But, but that is very pricey equipment, we need the manpower to run it. And then we've, you know, for years and years, all we had was money to fix streets, now that we do have some stormwater money. And by the way, that grate-oil was purchased out of that OWRB loan that we got to 30, uh, Mike, I'm sorry, but I forgot the number, however many million we borrowed from OWRB. We did take that grate-oil out of the top of it. We also are buying a street sweeper this year, and that's hugely important. You approved that just the other day, and that's a huge piece of stormwater maintenance. If we can keep the leaves and the stuff out of the streets, then it doesn't clog up the grates, and especially like there at 12th and Martin Luther King. That's, that's because the leaves flush down there, and they get stopped up in that grate, and, and then it plugs it up, and it, it's just a bad design. We'll, we'll get that corrected.
Thank you. Further questions from this body? No residents have signed up to speak to us tonight. Item 15.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307 B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section 307 B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 95, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C pursuant to Section 307 B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local Number 2465, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D pursuant to Section 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Jacob Schiller, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. E pursuant to Section 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the status of case number CV-2022-991, City of Muskogee versus June Green LLC filed in the District Court and inform Muskogee County, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. F pursuant to Section 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the status of case number CV-2022-157, City of Muskogee versus Ken Black filed in the District Court and inform Muskogee County, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. G pursuant to Section 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the lawsuit styled Arrowhead Mall versus City of Muskogee, CJ-2020-47, filed in the District Court and inform Muskogee County, Oklahoma, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session, including the appointment of a mediation representative. H pursuant to Section 307 B3 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the purchase of real property within the northwest quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. I pursuant to Section 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to hold confidential communications between the City Council and its attorneys concerning national prescription opioid litigation, Number 2804, in the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of Ohio against Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, Teva, and Allergan related to lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs, including possible authorization to settle claims and agreements, and consider approval of resolutions Number 2933, 2934, 2935, 2936, and 2937 in open session, and take other necessary action. And J pursuant to Section 307 B1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluate the performance of City Manager Mike Miller, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
I think what we probably would be best for us is not only to take a motion to go into executive session, but maybe put a five-to-seven minute break on that as well?
Second.
You have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
All right. Thank you. Roll call.
Perlin Boyati-Craig. Shirley Hilton-Flannery. Tracy Hoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Jones. Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
We now consider ourselves in executive session. We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Jamie Stout. Alex Reynolds. Stephanie Jones. Tracy McGee. Tracy Hoos. Shirley Hilton-Flannery. Perlin Boyati-Craig.
Ms. Bowden-Hammer.
Yes, sir. Item 15D pursuant to Section 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Jacob Schiller, and authorized the City Attorney's Office to settle the workers' compensation claim as discussed in executive session.
Need a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second on item D. Roll call.
Perlin Boyati-Craig. Shirley Hilton-Flannery. Tracy Hoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Jones. Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, thank you. Item E, I think?
Yes, sir, and actually, I'm gonna go back to A, B, and C.
Yes, ma'am.
Pursuant to Section 307 B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number No action was taken. Item 15B pursuant to Section 307 B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 95, and no action was taken. Item 15C pursuant to Section 307 B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local Number 2465, and no action was taken. And now we'll jump to item E, 15E pursuant to Section 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss the status of case number CV-2022-991, City of Muskogee versus June Green LLC, filed in the District Court and inform Muskogee County, and no action is necessary at this time. Item 15F pursuant to Section 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss the status of case number CV-2022-157, City of Muskogee versus Ken Black, filed in the District Court and inform Muskogee County, and no action is necessary at this time. Item 15G pursuant to Section 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss the lawsuit styled Arrowhead Mall versus City of Muskogee, CJ-2020-47, filed in the District Court and inform Muskogee County, Oklahoma, and authorized the City Attorney's Office to negotiate settlement as discussed and appointed counselors. Stephanie Morgan-Jones. Shirley. Shirley.
Hilton-Flannery.
Hilton-Flannery. Sorry. And Deputy City Attorney Derek Reed.
Bang.
Sorry, recommend a motion be made to appoint them.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second on that item.
Do we need to clarify that they have their settlement representatives with authority as granted, as discussed?
Yes.
I amend my motion to, to include that they have their settlement authority. Second.
We have a motion and a second on that item. Roll call.
Perlin Boyati-Craig. Shirley Hilton-Flannery. Tracy Hoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Jones. Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Pursuant to Section 307 B3 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss the purchase of real property within the northwest quadrant of the city, and authorized the negotiation execution of an agreement and the possible transfer of funds as required, and we do need a motion to that effect.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second on that item. Roll call.
Perlin Boyati-Craig. Shirley Hilton-Flannery. Tracy Hoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Jones. Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Upstaying.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Item Number 15I pursuant to 307 B4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to hold confidential communications between the City Council and its attorneys concerning N-RAY National Prescription Opiate Litigation, Number 2804, in the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of Ohio against Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, Teva, and Allergan related to lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs. And council did authorize the city to settle the lawsuits as discussed, and execute the agreements, and approved resolutions Number 2933, 2934, 2935, 2936, and 2937, and we do need a motion for approval of those resolutions and the agreements.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on item I.
And the final item is 15J. Oh, sorry.
Roll call.
Perlin Boyati-Craig. Shirley Hilton-Flannery. Tracy Hoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Jones. Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
The final item is 15J pursuant to 307 B1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluate the performance of City Manager Mike Miller, and action will be taken as discussed in executive session. Need a motion to that.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second on item J. Roll call.
Perlin Boyati-Craig. Shirley Hilton-Flannery. Tracy Hoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Jones. Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. That was our final item for tonight. We are adjourned.